Okay, this July 18th, 2018, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. And I see no changes. Dr. Morris, do you see any changes in that? No. So unless somebody has a change, could we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Brian, second by Denise. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, the agenda is approved. A public comment? Okay, great, none. Approval of the minutes, the regular minutes for June 20th. Have a motion?
I'll motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for June 20th.
Moved by Denise and second by Dan. Are there changes?
So I'll find it in a second.
What?
I do have one, but I do have, oh.
Okay.
Oh, so on the, on the regular minutes, I guess this is maybe a question about how we, how we do things. Last, last year, we took the manifest approval out of this meeting, and so the manifests are not approved as part of the board meeting. And so I'm wondering if it's appropriate to include the manifests in the minutes or not, because they were not actually part of the meeting.
So I can address that too, Michael. Michael raised this issue, I thought, you know, he made a valid point. I talked to Denise and Brian, because they were working on the manifest, and the suggestion I would make, Michael, is that it show up under committee reports by the, by Denise and Brian, just simply say they reviewed the manifest, and then it's in the right place, and it's appropriately placed.
That makes perfect sense.
So it has approval of manifests on the, on the minutes, right? That's, that's not.
So we would move approval, because the full board doesn't approve. They've authorized the subcommittee to do that work. And all I want in the minutes is that they met, and then we have the signed documents. So if it comes under committee reports, it's, it resolves the issue.
I think that makes more sense, yeah.
Okay. Should we have like that on this, these minutes, or should that just be something to?
Yeah, I would do it, starting tonight. So if Denise or Brian makes that report tonight, then Laura can catch it, and we'll get it in the right place, and from here on in, it'll show up there.
So it'll just be, okay. So when it comes to committee reports, she'll just bring that up?
Just saying it, bring that up, yeah.
Okay, great. Other changes, Michael?
Nope.
Okay. With that change, could I have a show of hands, all in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, none opposed, the minutes are approved. And we have actually two non-public meeting minutes, right? So, let's see. Uh, so we have, I'm sorry, just, uh, so the first one, first one says, begins Kenny Rotner moved to enter non-public at 9:04, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve that set of non-public? Denise?
I motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes, and I don't read the RSA, but it was under the RSA 91-a colon three, Roman numeral two C.
Okay, moved by Denise, is her second? Second by Michael. Are there changes to that?
The, the vote to enter this non-public was actually seven-zero, I believe. I think we were all, not six-zero, I think it should be seven-zero.
Seven-zero, okay, with that change?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Other changes? Okay. With that change, good, all in favor, please raise your hands. Six in favor, those minutes are approved. Then we had, let's see, I'm sorry, minutes to begin Denise, stay moved to enter in a non-public at 9:15. Could I have a motion to approve that set of non-public meeting minutes?
I'll motion to approve that.
Moved by Denise, is her second? Is her second, I'm sorry. Brian? Are there changes in that? Denise?
Well, okay, so Kenny Rotner didn't just recuse it, he left, he left the meeting. So it, and the roll call vote was just six-zero.
Yes.
Because he, he actually left the meeting.
Yeah.
Could change that from recuse lower to Kenny, Kenny Rotner left that, um, non-public meeting.
And he left prior to the vote to enter?
Yeah.
Non-public?
Yes.
Not present.
Yeah. Okay, so it should be just six-zero, right?
Yeah, it said, the one that, the one that adjourned says six-zero.
Six-zero is right on adjournment, because Kenny wasn't present.
Yeah, that's, that's right on adjournment, but it says.
Six-zero-one, upon.
It should, it should be changed to six-zero, that's correct, right?
He was not present, he was not even in the room. He didn't abstain, he just wasn't present.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it?
Got it.
Okay. And I think the principle is that when somebody recuses themselves, that their vote isn't counted at all, right? Because you're counting, it's not an abstention, it's, it's they're not, they're not participating in the vote. Okay, all those in favor, with that change, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Six in favor, those non-public minutes are approved. Moving to announcements, comments, and commendations from the district.
Carrie Vash from Massway. I just wanted to give a quick update on the building project going on over in Lee. It is so exciting, I have to say. It's been amazing. Dr. Morris took some pictures today that he's passing around, so you can all take a look. Really, the day after school got, or the day school got out, when I say teachers walked out the door, and within 20 minutes, there was a caution tape line out, and they were ripping down the awning. It was pretty amazing, as they were on the job, ready to go. Up to date, we actually almost have all of the new windows put in place. Touring today, insulation, spray foam, all those areas that are really going to help with conservation of energy is all done. Siemens is actually ahead of plan on their side of things. They went through lightning speed to change out all the lighting fixtures. It's made a world of difference. They are the coolest lights. I walked through every, every classroom the other day, like a little kid, just playing a magic trick, trying to, as you walk in, they automatically go on, and they automatically go off. It was pretty amazing, and you can dim them.
Can you adjust the color on those things?
You can adjust them all, and teachers can be in charge of it, too. So if you wanted them all off, or if you're doing something like that, you can do that as well. It is amazing.
Well, I mean, again, like, is it like, you know how they have like daylight light? I guess it may be, it's more like intensity, right?
Right, yeah. They can be very bright, or they can be very mellow.
Yeah, we played around with them a little bit today. It is amazing, and they're going around right now, and they're programming all of them, so that you'll have that ability to do that. Really, in the back of the building, concrete's up, the steel is actually up in place, so we're ready to go, our next steps back there. And I believe the steel up in the front part of the project is going to be going in tomorrow. So everything's moving along very smoothly. We're on budget, we're right where we wanted to be. It's really going seamlessly, and the crews there have been amazing. I can't praise Jim Rosicky enough for every setting everything up, so it's been great. I don't know if you want to add any more, Dr. Morris, about what you saw. It's doing great, so thanks all.
Okay. Others? From the board, announcements, comments?
I just wanted to suggest that we think about the calendar, the school year calendar. We had some discussion about it around the end of the year, and what we'd do with the last couple days of school. And I think it might be worth thinking about it, big picture, in terms of when our school year starts, and when our school year ends. I, I know that what we, what we're doing aligns with the towns around us, and it is very much in line with tradition here. But we're also a district that is closely tied to the university community, and our calendar does not in any way take, seem to take the university calendar into account at all. And I can say for myself, I think that our family would enjoy finishing up earlier in June, even at the expense of perhaps starting a little bit earlier in August, or even giving up some vacation during the year. So I wanted to suggest that we, we think about that, and maybe even start to ask some questions of our school community of if, what we think about this calendar, and if we think that the start and end of the school year is where it should be.
So, Michael, I did get an invitation from the Dover superintendent, who sent out an invitation to the Somersworth superintendent, and the Rochester superintendent, and the Barrington superintendent, because we all share the three Volk schools in these communities. And his, he's new to the state, and we're struggling with some of the same issues you just raised, about how late we got out this year and so forth. And he's asked if the superintendents would sit and talk about the calendar. And his concern is the number of breaks we have in the wintertime. I mean, we have two breaks in the wintertime, some states only have one. Just happen, going back to your issue of tradition, a lot of what we do around the calendar is based on, quite frankly, an agrarian calendar from the 18th century, and the 19th century, not even an industrial calendar. It's based on planting, and sowing, and reaping. And that's why we have summers the way we have them. And so I'd be interested in, in pursuing this issue as well, and see where our community is. But in the meantime, I'll be having conversations with our area superintendents, and we'll share that, that conversation with, with, with the community, with the school board as well.
So, Michael, would you see some kind of polling of the community, just to see if there'd be an openness to, you know, sort of possibilities? Like, for example, it seems to me, one might be starting earlier in August and finishing earlier in, you know, June. Another might be going from one, two, two breaks in the, the, February and April break, going to a March break, which would coincide with the university calendar.
Which is, yeah.
Those are a couple of options, I think you've, you know, kind of.
Yeah, and I guess I think that the, the second one that you mentioned, aligning the spring break with the university spring break, would be probably a more substantial change than just trading a week from beginning and end of the school year.
Okay.
But, but yeah, I think probably getting, soliciting some community input would be worthwhile.
Okay. So maybe think about Andy Smith or polling or something?
You know, Andy's been a wonderful asset to the district in the past, and when we were talking about issues later around the middle school, I wanted to contact Andy on that, so I certainly can add this to the list.
Okay. Other announcements, commendations, comments? I did have the pleasure of watching Chris Hall present, and he's a Heinemann fellow. And it's interesting, these group of Heinemann fellows, they're chosen from about almost 300 applicants, and two of them came from Durham, which I thought is just probably right, you know? From across the country. And so Chris Hall and Ian Fleischer both presented, and they were just fabulous. It was just stunning, and Chris, you know, as, was part of his sabbatical, is creating this research group that's going to kind of do something similar to what he did with, with Heinemann, in terms of doing teacher research. But it was just the most wonderful presentation, I was so, so impressed by him, and so proud for us, so. Others? No? Okay. So Assistant Superintendent, update?
Before I get into the standardized testing report, I just want to quickly throw a couple of brags about summer programming. This week, we have 80 kids in our REACH program, which is the most we've ever had, so it's really cool. So we have nine camps going, it's going really well. And I was talking to Doris Demers, who runs the lunch program, and we've been averaging 75 kids a day, having, having the free lunch program at the middle school. And that includes last week, when the numbers in REACH were lower. So one of the neat things is that I think kids in the community, and families in the community are aware of it, and kids are popping in just for lunch, which is exactly why we're, we're running this program. So thanks to Doris and Tim Kanalee for doing that, but it's, it's going really well. And also thanks to Deb Byrne for all her efforts to coordinate and keep it going. It's, it's been, it's just a really, really great program, and it's kind of exciting to see that many kids. In fact, I was talking to Bill Sullivan today, and he said, "It feels like a school day," because we had 80, 80 kids in REACH, and then there were like 36 kids in the extended school year program. So you had, you know, like 120 kids, and then probably 20 or 30 adults in the building today. Really good stuff. So anyway, just throw that out there.
Great.
All right, you should have a copy of just a summary that I put together of the New Hampshire SAS and SAT scores. Please make note, I updated it initially, the SAT scores were not quite yet available on the state webs, website. So I was able to kind of dig into the college board, and I was able to get the results kind of backdoor, so I was able to get that. So I've updated it, you should have one, and the one that shows the, the SATs junior year, and then the overall average, that's the one I would encourage you to take a look at. Kind of, before we get into talking about results, Wendy, I believe, updated it online.
So you're talking the update on testing results?
Yes.
The one we should be looking at?
Yeah, she updated, there was, there should be, there was two versions, one that did not include SATs.
It says revised in upper left-hand corner.
Yeah, she said red. You got it?
Yeah, got it.
So before we get into talking about the specifics of the results, just to remind you, this is the first year that the state of New Hampshire has done the New Hampshire SAS testing. SAS stands for Standardized Assessment System. Prior to this year, the previous three years, we were in the Smarter Balanced Consortium. State decided to move away from that, in order to kind of create their own test. It's important to note that it is a, although it is based on Common Core, ELA, and math, it is a different test, it's important to note that. So what I have in front of you right now is comparative of us year over year. What is not available yet is comparatives of ourselves to other school districts, and to give us that idea. So I can't speak exactly to, to growth just yet, because until I see how it stacks up across the state, it's hard to say how valid the results are. Typically, when you have a new test, it takes about three years to get to the point where the data is reliable. The DOE will tell you, though, because it's based on the same assumptions with the Common Core, that they feel it is comparable, and you should go ahead and compare it. I say, as statistically, the proof is in, let me see how, how it compares out. That being said, if you look at our results, clearly, we're fairly consistent with the way we've been in the past. Quick note, the last week of school, we did send all of the individual score reports to all families, so all families should have received by now. Three emails from the school district, you did, you got it?
Yeah.
One that gave you the guide to interpreting your child's test scores, a second email that had the sheet that gave you your math scores, and a third email that then gave you their ELA scores. Okay? So everybody should have received those by now. What I have in front of you is the overall aggregates. Again, if you look at it, although I don't have state scores in the past, state average in ELA has typically been 55 to 65% proficient. So typically, Oyster River is, you know, 15 to 20% above state average there. State math has historically been 46 to 55%. So again, we're typically 15 to 20% above state average in our math scores. So this year, we, that, I'm, again, I haven't seen the state scores yet, but I'm going to assume that there were, we did quite well in comparison, but we'll, we'll know for sure when I have those results. The way the test this year is different than the Smarter Balanced. Smarter Balanced had basically two components. They had what they called a computer adaptive test, which was basically a test that was largely multiple choice. You did the answers, and if you got the question right, they gave you a harder question. If you got the question wrong, they'd give you another question that kind of probed that topic, and then gradually work your way through it. So it was a computer adaptive assessment. They also had a second test, which was called the performance task, and that was much more of a hands-on. It was either, typically, it was a writing prompt in the ELA portion, or it was a kind of a problem-solving activity in the math portion. In the New Hampshire SAS, they did away with the performance task. So the only component we have is what they call the, what we would call the computer adaptive portion. So that's, that's how it's different. Now, there is a writing component in this, although you might ask, well, how could it be a writing component if it's multiple choice? I mean, there is, there are questions that are, they'll give you a passage, or they'll ask you to solve a problem, and then you can, you might type an answer, or they would ask you to do things like grammar questions, and things of that sort, to identify, understanding parts of speech, and that kind of thing. But it is a slightly different test. When you look at, the results have only been out for about two weeks, but looking at it just broad strokes, if you look generally at our math scores, in, and I want to, I want to say this very carefully, because I don't want to, I don't want to be quoted as we have giant weaknesses, but if you're going to look for areas of relative weakness, if you look at the early grades, like third and fourth grade, the area of general weakness, I would say is, excuse me, I'm just going to get to my notes, because I don't want to misquote myself, is related to geometry and data analysis. That's in the early grades. When you get up into sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, you start to see the area of probability and statistics becomes, comes an area of concern in mathematics. If you're looking at the area of ELA, basically, the test has three components to it. There's a, what they call informational text, then they have a literature section, and then they have a writing section, so they're scored in three different components. If you're going to, again, talking about areas of relative weakness, the literature section was an area where we scored slightly less than, than the others. Now, again, ELA has always been a very strong strength for the Oyster River district. So when I'm talking about relative weakness, we're talking about the difference between, you know, in one, in the informational text, we might have 85 to 88% proficient. In the literature section, we're talking 80-ish percent, generally speaking. Clearly, what needs to happen now, now that we have the results, these are going to go back to our teachers. Our teachers use them in multiple ways. I mean, first way that we use them is kind of individually for a student. We generally think in terms of three, three things that we want to look at when we're looking at a student's progress. We have two different standardized assessments we do, the status, the NHSAS and STAR, but then we also look at classroom assessments, as we kind of figure out, you know, tracking a student's progress and moving forward. So teachers individually, and in small groups, take a look at that, to determine like what that means at the classroom level. A second area that we do a lot, in fact, I'm very excited for this upcoming year with the schedule changes that we've made at the elementary schools, to create grade-level meeting time, to create the opportunity to really work as grade-level teams, to really delve deeper into the data, and talk about how we can, can make adjustments. But historically, our math committee and our ELA committees have taken a look at that, the data, in the interest of trying to identify what are the general trends, and what are the areas that we need to strengthen. I already mentioned math a lot, but like this year, we've spent a lot of time with our literacy committee, beginning to look at, okay, what are the, what are our areas of strength, and what are the programs that we need to, to put in place, to make sure we're supporting all of our, our learners as they go forward. The third way that we use the data is really in a curricular manner. In fact, going way back to when kneecap tests were first introduced, we were sold the bill of goods, that this is not an individual assessment of students, this is a program assessment. And a lot of, generally speaking, that's where these assessment tests started from, is to allow us to assess program. So it allows us to take a look at the big picture and say, okay, what are the general areas of strength and weakness? And that's kind of what I was talking to you about, in terms of relative comparison. So as we move forward, in ELA, for example, we'll be asking ourselves, okay, what do we need to do to strengthen our, our program with regards to kids' understanding of literature and literary themes? And in math, clearly, we'll be looking at geometry at the younger grades, and probability and statistics as you get higher up, and begin to talk about what do we need to do with our program as a whole, to get better results. That being said, overall, as a district, I'm very proud of the results we got. We've, you know, we're very stable in terms of that performance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just, really, you know, we're missing information that's really, you know, as I think you say, important, because you want to know kind of what the state, because these, I think, first time around, the test, you know, they can claim they're normed kind of with equal rigor in every grade, but that's really hard to do. And so whether they, like, a decline like, you know, an 84 to 71, whether they might be having a somewhat more rigorous standard in that grade, the 71. And so that might be, when you get the state average, you might begin to see.
Definitely.
Whether, because maybe the state average is also lower, so they just made the test harder. And that was one comment I had, and, and so I think when we get that, not that we're going to have, but I think maybe something that lines it up with the state.
Absolutely. In fact, I'd, I'd love to give you a comparison of our compare schools, just so you can get a sense of where we compare to the state, but also how we compare to the schools that we're often comparing ourselves to. And so that data will, I'm told, will be available in, in September. And actually, one thing I forgot to mention, there was also a science assessment done for fifth, eighth, and 11th grade. That is taking longer to score, and so they have said that data will be available in September as well. And all families will also receive an individual score report on how their kid did on the science assessment as well.
I have one question, Todd.
Sure.
So what's really annoying is that they switch test after you just got a three-year sample.
Yep.
So it's, so the question is, will they, is there like some longevity to this, this task? I know that's impossible to answer, I mean.
Three-year contract.
Is that what it is?
Yep.
Yeah.
As politicians change, the test changes. As governors change, the test changes.
Yeah.
So they signed a three-year contract, no guarantee beyond the third year, and this has happened, this is the third statewide assessment in my six years as superintendent.
Right.
So just when you start to get the longevity, you know, the longitudinal data, they change it.
Yeah, I, the reason for the change, as I understand it, is that it gave the state of New Hampshire more control over, over what the assessment was, and it would allow us to adapt it. You may recall, with Smarter Balanced, there was a lot of criticism about the length of the test, and the fact that kids were spending, you know, six to eight hours doing the Smarter Balanced test, and this one.
Why there's no writing, no prompt.
Was a much shorter test. We did one test, was about an hour and a half on one day for math, and another one the second day for ELA. And then for the kids doing science, there was a third day for that. So it was probably 30 to 40% less testing that was done, so that's, that's the, one of the, the components, it's being able to control it ourselves. But in the group of, you know, curriculum and instruction people, we were all very frustrated when they announced, you know, we, we finally got to the point where we felt like we were really getting a handle on Smarter Balanced, and then they abandoned it. That being said, they abandoned Smarter Balanced, they didn't abandon Common Core standards, so the standards that we're measuring are, are the same. It's just getting the sense that the measure we're using is comparable, and we're just not there yet.
I have one more thing on that, because we do have a four-year, so how's that computer thing worked? Because we have four years now that we've actually had to do it on a computer.
Right.
Not with a paper, so, and I know we, since, since everything worked.
Yeah, the, we spent an enormous amount of time in the very first year, when they went to a computer-adapted test, training our teachers, and having the students go through practice throughout the school year. So the computer-adapted piece is working flawlessly at this point.
Yeah, that, and I think when this started, one of the motivators to get our technology up to snuff was in order to, to do standardized testing, and so the quality of the, the tools that our kids have to work with is significantly more. And in, in the two elementary schools, we now have tech integrators at both schools that are actually, you know, working with all, all kids along the way. And so a lot of the skills that we had to sort of do a crash course in prior to testing the first couple of times we did it, are now embedded across the board, so there's a lot less time being spent with your third and fourth graders, getting them to understand how to use a mouse, and how to use the different tools, and that kind of thing. So we, so we've made some growth there, and.
I'd just slide into Todd. So, you know, I want to go back to Al's question, because it's really an important question. So if the state continues as they have in this pattern of just the six years I've been in New Hampshire, of shifting the statewide assessment, I think it goes back to a more fundamental question for the district, is what does this district think is important?
Yeah.
You know, because if the data points are always moving, then the reflection has to be, what does the school board, what does the community think is important in terms of graduation? You know, and there are objective pieces of data that we have that demonstrate how well we're doing. Graduation rates, college placement rates, the success of our students in the special needs program. I mean, there's a host of documentation that we can supplement that would indicate that we're doing, you know, a pretty good job. My concern is, the very concern you raised, Al, is keep switching the test. And it's all right, it's well good that the governor and the commissioner say, well, all we did was switch the name, but it's still a Common Core assessment. It's still an apples and oranges comparison. So it is frustrating. It's frustrating for the teachers, and it's frustrating for the parents, and it's frustrating for the system. So that's why I say we, we really need to be aware of who, who we are as a system, and what our priorities are, and how we're doing against those measures, as opposed to a state assessment that's changing every three years.
I mean, I'm looking at the silver lining, we built the technology piece in that, that we're going to use anyway, and that we've gained the training, and that's standardized and embedded in our, so that's, that's a positive that we've got.
Absolutely. Yeah, and our kids are generally very comfortable with the, with the format of the test. We've been doing STAR assessment now for six years anyway. So kids, three times a year, are doing a, a small version of it. So their comfort level with it is, is pretty high, so even if you change the questions and the nature of the questions, they're comfortable with the format, so I think it went pretty well. And there were absolutely no technical glitches of any kind, so I thank the IT department for doing such a great job, making it all work. Thank you. Anything else? Great, thank you.
Thanks, thanks. Superintendents are for it? Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Tom. I just have a few things. I'm reading my lousy handwriting. Oh, I wanted to let the board know that the work, you know, that we're seeing at Masway is exciting and long overdue, and we're really excited about the pace that the work is happening. But we still just wanna make sure that no one gets too optimistic. We're shooting for, you know, what I'll say is a Thanksgiving date for all of that work to be done at Masway. Whether holding and, and people being as aggressive as they are, you know, it could be earlier, but if somebody asks you on the street when that work's being done, say Thanksgiving, and then we can always, hey, it was done in the middle of October, where the timeline that they have brings them to the end of October. Meantime, we have the same architect, Steve Blatt, who designed the work at Masway, now designing the work for MoHaramet. And so by the time we hit the fall, we'll have concept design and cost estimates related to doing similar work at MoHaramet, the reconfiguration of the administrative wing, and potentially one additional classroom that I can talk to you about when we have those drawings. So that work is underway. Good news in relation to technology, the Dell, Dell computers, Dell was telling this, us that the computers for the students and staff wouldn't be in until the middle to late of August, which would really have put us under a crunch. They're all sitting in our building right now, in the performing arts, in the auditorium, and they're being configured as we speak, so we'll have all of those machines distributed by the time school opens, so that's really good news. I just also wanted to piggyback Kerry's report on Masway. Similar efforts are going on, of course, at MoHaramet, the middle school and the high school. In the middle school right now, they're in the process of cleaning all of the dockwork, and that was part of this project, because who knows when the last time they were cleaned? And then the lighting projects, the lighting emphasis and the window emphasis is switching over to MoHaramet next week, so the work that Kerry has seen at Masway in terms of windows and lighting, David will see, starting right up. And the lighting at this building is in the process of gearing up, and one of the things that Brian asked me is, you know, what's all of those boxes in the senior court that you walk by? Those are the lights that, in the, in this building, the gymnasium is already done. Amazing difference in lighting in terms of, if you put those things at full blast, it's, it's just very, very bright. So it's really great that you can tone them down. And so in terms of our contractors working in the district this, this summer, really super, super work. Bowen Construction, who's been our construction manager on all of our projects, has truly done an amazing job. And Sue, is there anything else that we should, that I missed in the, in the projects that are going?
Yes.
Okay. So I wanted to make sure you guys knew that, and I think that's it for this evening.
You're gonna talk about-
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
These things.
Doris, Doris.
I don't write it myself, I forget to put it down. Doris Demir is received another recognition, the president's award of achievement, and as a school nutrition director. And we all know that she's truly transformed the food service program in the district, and the food that we're providing our students is so much better than six years ago, and it's really on her shoulders. She's done a fantastic job, and she deserves the recognition. I think I did it that time, Tom.
Okay.
Transportation update. So you probably saw the signs we put out at each of the schools. Amazing results as a result of those signs. We actually filled all six open positions that we've been, yeah, well, hold on. That's the good news. The good news is we filled all the six positions, and Lisa Huppie said, well, I'm gonna take the signs down, and she took them all down. And I looked at Sue, and I said, we're not taking those signs down, put them back up. Sure enough, in the last couple of weeks, we lost two drivers, so we're still up four. And so, you know, the signs have been an amazing contribution to awareness, and, you know, the, the drivers have been sharing with other drivers, which was our other goal, about our contract and our benefits, and that also is attracting drivers. So the new contract is working, the signs are working, and we're optimistic that we'll start the school year with a full, full staff. But right now, officially, we're two down as opposed to six.
It's improvement.
Big improvement. And then I just wanna talk about enrollment for a little bit. So if you can pull that sheet out. So it's, you know, it's typical, the enrollment issues for us always focus in on the two elementary schools, the middle school and the high school have a much more flexible ability to combine students and reassign students in classes and so forth, although I would point out that both the middle school and high school are, in their data misses if there's any kids who are leaving. And so the eight twenty-three might be eighteen at the high school, we just don't know, because at the older levels, they tend to ask for their paperwork once they've enrolled in a new school. At the younger, younger levels, they tend to tell the secretary they're going to Hampton. And so when you look at the elementary information in the colored boxes, I just wanna bring your attention to the words "to be placed" and "to withdraw." So as an example, if you look at the MoHaramet school in first grade, you'll see that each class has sixteen kids, but under, in that same column, there are three first graders to be placed, and then there are two that are withdrawing. So the secretaries at the elementary schools keep this work for me so I can monitor better the comes and goings of, of students. If you look at the second grade at Masway, they have eight to be placed and two that are leaving, so the net of six. So the numbers of seventeen, nineteen, seventeen, and seventeen would increase by the six students that still need to be placed. So I just wanted to make sure you understood that. We do have very full classes in, in MoHaramet in grades two, three, and four, and very full classes of grade four at Masway. Then I wanna bring your attention down to the very bottom of the sheet where you see the zero, zero, three, two, one, and then a total of six. And then if you look over at, from, from MoHaramet, and then you look over to Masway, it says three, two, one, and, zero, zero, three, two, one, and six again. So those are the youngsters who have enrolled, who are new to the system, and we, we have projected them to not attend MoHaramet because MoHaramet's second grade is at twenty-two, twenty, well, actually, it's twenty-two, twenty-two, and twenty-two. And there are three kids to be placed in grade two over to Masway that normally would go to MoHaramet. So I hope I'm making sense, because the reason I'm, I'm bringing this up is, school board policy to IIB says that the second and third grade should have no more than twenty, the guideline is no more than twenty. So you can see that in second and third grade at MoHaramet, we have exceeded that, because those are kids who have been in the system right along. We're pushing the envelope of twenty in second and third grade, particularly third grade, yet at Masway. My concern is, I don't have any solution, because there is no, literally no room at the inn at MoHaramet or Masway in this upcoming school year. I do have, I do have a family that is really upset with the school system related to their children having to attend Masway. They bought a house almost within walking distance of MoHaramet, and they're pretty ticked to that, you know, their children have to cross the district. And they asked me to ask you, and in my conversations with David, this is, I think this has to be, to be fair and all or nothing. If those children, say those three second-grade children stayed at MoHaramet, you would have twenty-three, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Those three children are in Kerry's numbers right now as to be placed, so that part of that, six kids that have to be placed, which would, you know, bring Kerry up to nineteen, nineteen, and eighteen. So at the beginning of the year, you know, I asked the board, as we ended the school year, I should say, I asked the board, you know, how hard do you want me to implement policy IIB in terms of trying to keep the numbers balanced between the two schools? And I guess I asked that question again tonight, only because a particular family has really asked me to ask you, and as I talk to David, we really feel like if we're doing it for one, we should be doing it for all, because there's an equity issue there. Even though the other families haven't raised it as a concern, I still think it's a fairness issue, because they didn't know it was a possibility. So I don't know that it's a possibility. My response to the family to date has been, they have to register at Masway. And I just wanna know if the board is, is there with me, or do you want me to do something different with those five, those, well, six children in total that we plan on sending over to Masway from MoHaramet?
Do we provide transportation?
We provide the transportation. We have over a hundred children who would attend MoHaramet if we had the space at MoHaramet, who are Durham residents. So really, MoHaramet is just like MoHaramet, Masway and MoHaramet are both schools that serve bo, all three communities. I think there's an illusion that MoHaramet is Durham's school, but I do think it's an illusion, because we have, as I said, over a hundred youngsters who also attend school in Lee, who are, who would be considered part of Durham. So I'm, you know, I'm raising this because I am getting a lot of pushback, and I just, you know, wanna make sure that I'm in, I'm putting this policy forward the way you want me to, or if you don't want me to be that hard-nosed, then, you know, David and I understand it, but the implications are that the second and third grade are only gonna grow at MoHaramet.
I mean, when I look at this, first of all, I think time will eventually cure this, because if you look at like the first grade and the, and the kindergartners, eventually the problem will take care of itself. I, I mean, I sympathize with a family that lives really close, but again, if you open the door to one family, then you have to open it to everyone, and it's already an extraordinarily difficult thing to do. And I think, you know, as a district, really, our obligation is really to make sure that both elementary schools are well-staffed, that they're as, within all possible reason we hold them to class-size policy, and that, that that's our obligation. It's not that if you buy a house right next to a school, you get to go to that school. And, and I think we've done everything to ensure the quality of the buildings. I mean, it's somewhat ironic, somebody saying that after we've just spent, what, a couple of million dollars on Masway on facilities. So I think, unfortunately, I, you know, I feel for the family, but I think we should stick with what our policy was.
It seems to me if you, if you do it across the board, so have all of those six placed at MoHaramet, you're gonna like trip, trip a lot of classes over the edge, right? I mean, so I think, I think, I think you're right, if you do it for them, you should offer it to everybody. If you offer it to everybody, then you've really kinda tripped-
Pass.
-the class size, and not just one or two, probably three or four classes. So I think, I think we have to hold, that's what I was saying. Does anybody wanna offer a counter?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's a, it comes down to, you know, I share, as Al expressed, the sympathy. It's gotta be a frustrating thing. But this impacts the experience of the students across the board, in any given class that we increase the size of. So I think that has to be the priority, and unless we have a way to mitigate that, which we don't at MoHaramet, I, I don't think that's something we can sacrifice.
And they're going to a great school.
We also have the problem that we're only in July, and we don't know that the number is six.
Right.
Right.
Absolutely.
Could be more, you know, could be twelve.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, well, then I'll let the parent know that I raised the issue, and I did tell them, quite frankly, that I would predict the board would want to hold to the policy, because that's why they passed the policy in the first place, so there won't be any surprise. Doesn't mean they're gonna be happy, but I, I understand their frustration completely.
Sure. Sure, we do, I think we all do.
I think it's not that we don't feel for them, I think we just need to stick to our policy.
Yeah, class, class size, you know, I mean, we've gone over moments, but I think we've really tried to, to follow that policy. The thing that strikes me is the small size of the kindergarten.
Yeah.
And I think that-
They're missing kindergarteners, that's like way below long-range planning predictions.
Yeah. And I think if, if that, if that trend continues even a couple of years, you're gonna have a dramatically smaller elementary school and middle school. Because I mean, if you have kindergarten classes of around a hundred, you know, even, even with the great progression ratios, you're gonna have like a middle school of, say, four fifty, four sixty, you know? So it's really something to keep an eye on. I'm sure the long-range planning's gonna do that, but I think-
Go back to the drawing board.
Yeah, I mean, really, really, because I mean, you're thinking this, you know, it's a stable situation, but if that continues two years-
Right.
-or not. And then, you know, then you have to kinda, I don't know, in terms of replacement of teachers, you might have to be very cautious about that, knowing that you're not going to maybe have that big a middle school. So something to keep an eye on for sure. Okay?
Yep.
Other things, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Uh, business administrator?
I just have one thing. You should have a letter in your folders from the commissioner. We received another twenty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars from the Public School Infrastructure Fund.
Right.
We heard there were some funds available, so Jim put in, Jim Rozicky put in an application for additional security cameras at Masway, and we received it, so that was great news.
Good.
That's it. Thanks.
That grant was how much?
Twenty-four, eight thirty-six. That's eighty percent of the project. All good?
Fantastic.
We won't recognize Masway in the fall.
So we have no student senate report. So we have this, I guess, approval that we're following a certain set of guidelines, is that my understanding?
Yeah.
Because they're getting federal money soon.
Yeah, so this is general assurances, and historically, the general assurances have been signed by me and passed on to the state. You know, some of what we're doing under general services assurances is fiscal accountability, compliance with state and federal law, dissemination of materials, availability of materials, meeting ADA compliance, gun-free school compliance, drug-free school compliance, equitable, equitable access to programs for children in private and charter schools. It's just, this list is enormous, and I sent you the entire thing to give you a sense of how many laws exist, and this is, and regulations, that the school system has to comply with. And typically, this has never reached your level, because it's really just a management letter. However, the law did not change, the commissioner's position on general assurances changed. So the administrators that are most impacted by this would be Sue Caswell, Catherine, Todd, and me. But largely, what we're saying is, we're doing all the things the federal and state, the federal government and the state government require of us. So that's really what this is. It's the same thing that I've signed for the last five years, and my predecessor signed for decades. It just keeps on growing. So we asked the commissioner why he wanted to raise it to the level that the board would have to take a vote and support the general assurances, and his position was, he felt that the school boards across the state needed to have, and this is exact quote, "skin in the game." Like, what that means, I have no idea. But in order for me and Tom to sign this, we actually now have to have a motion of the school board, in support of the school board, so we can sign it.
So I, actually, ironically, I, I think it's a, a good thing that we actually looked at this, because the, I mean, it was like a painful thing-
Wow.
-to read through the whole thing, but I think it raises our awareness of like what we really are responsible being held to. So I think, you know, in that respect, it was a good thing.
So you make a motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve the general assurances.
Goodbye, Al. Who'd buy, I'll second by Denise? Further questions for Jim? Hearing none, all of us in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor. So I think I just have to sign, Sue, you'll date it then, and do all the rest?
Wendy will.
Make sure you sign in blue.
Okay, I got it.
We taped a blue pen to it, Michael.
Okay, she'll date it, no, I don't know. Okay, that's done. Okay, so all of you have received the middle school facilities report. Four of us were on the committee, so I think we followed pretty closely what was happening, and all four of us, you know, just had an opportunity to read it. I know Michael gave some feedback, which I tried to accommodate in the final report. And so I think it'd be useful, a couple of questions, just to maybe get us going. I think if there are questions that those people who are not on the committee have about the report, you know, this would be a good time to raise those. And it seems to me, just in terms of procedure, Dr. Morse, I'd be interested in your view on this, is that at some point, our next decision might be whether we accept the recommendation of the facilities committee, you know, which would then set us on the course of then, we have two options then to look at, and then we would have to choose which of the two options, and then at that point, you know, we'd have to figure out the next step. But I'm just trying to think of what the next step would be. And so what information would we need, what things that we need to do, who we need to talk to, until we felt we were ready to vote on the facilities report? Because it seems to me that would be a step, right?
Yep. And I think that, you know, accepting a report of this nature is important, so that we can publicly distribute it, as a report that has been provided to school board. But it also begins the process of answering questions the community has. You know, we looked at 13 options from the beginning, including every configuration we could think of, and ultimately, the committee felt there were two viable options out of the 13, either building on the current site, or building new on a different site. And, you know, the committee did an enormous amount of work, and over the course of the year, what it does for me, the report provides me the vehicle to be able to say to community members, you know, why we ultimately recommended the two options we recommended. But the information that you don't have will be coming once we have a construction manager and architect on board. So, you know, the committee, majority of the committee say, is recommending that we build on-site. Well, we don't know if the site is suitable yet. I mean, if we, once we have a construction manager and an architect, they'll do board testing on that site, and then we'll know whether it could support a building in the location that we think the building would be in, leaving the current building up, so that we have a place to educate the kids. So there's a lot of information, I think, that the board needs in September and October to, before you could say, this is the solution we're presenting to the community. And so that's why I wanted to move on the construction manager and the architect. By the way, both of those ads have gone out through Construction Management Magazine, which is the magazine that architects and contractors look through. And I've had one query on it already, so I know it's being read. We plan on reviewing those in the middle of August, and then selecting the two firms that we want to deal with at the end of August. So that process is in play. So I think there are questions that have to be answered beyond the work that we did last year, before the board can finalize and say, this is, this is what we're going to talk to the community about from this point on.
So maybe questions from those who weren't on the committee, you know, just Denise?
So first, I just want to say a big thank you to those of you who were, and to all the other members of the public that volunteered their time. Obviously, there was a lot of work, it was very thorough, and I really appreciate also having this great report. My one question is just about the Goss property. I just would like a little bit more background in how it came to the board, to the committee's attention, that this might be a feasible property, and the report simply says, you know, that that's one of the recommendations. But I'd like to sort of maybe hear from the committee a little bit more in terms of how that came about, as far as the Goss-
I was on the subcommittee that looked at the property, and on that subcommittee, Dave Garvey, who is a builder in the area, who's, has a pretty amazing knowledge of land, you know, that might be available, so he came up with about nine properties, and we started looking at them, and some of them were just way too far out, you know, so we thought that wouldn't work. There was one, it was a Young Drive, which would require buying a lot of houses, so we thought that, you know, so we eliminated some of them. The Goss property, A, we really don't know whether that's, you know, there's a kind of committed seller to that property, so there's a lot we don't, we didn't check out. But in terms of, and Michael, you probably can add in on this, and Dan as well, that it's possibly a bigger property than the 11 and a half acres that we have now. So there's a size to it. There's a, you know, I haven't walked, you've walked it, Dr. Morse, there's, because the, because there's a building there, there's like the lines of, you know, utilities and things, you know, that we thought that would be more manageable than if you built in some kind of remote property. In terms of getting to it, it's pretty, you know, pretty, it would be pretty easy, because there's roads in, there's a parking lot, so access. So we thought it was buildable, it was flat, it, you could have 16 acres, you could have 18, you know, in terms of there's land there, whether it's for sale, whether they're willing to sell, whether they're willing to sell it for a reasonable price, we don't know.
Okay.
But, so we had some properties that were, you know, about the same size as we had now. And so he said, well, what, you know, if you have like this, if you have like 11 and a half acres right in the center of town that you already own, why buy, you know, why sell that and buy 11 and a half acres farther out? And so that was a question. But also, I mean, there's certain advantages in terms of like, you know, bigger fields, expandable, you know, having land that, you know, maybe you buy more land than the 16 acres, so if the school, for any reason ever had to expand, Michael brought this point up, about expansion, there might be some possibility there. So it's kind of a wild card, we don't know. Okay. But it seemed to have the advantages, and a lot of the other properties had wetlands, or, you know, concerned about that. Todd, you were on the committee, maybe you want to say, if I'm representing correctly?
Yeah, a couple of things I would add. We actually, there was a property, the Beach Hill property, that was owned by UNH, that we, it started us in a conversation with them, and then the Goss property, UNH also has a common interest in, and then it was some thought that we might have common enough interests, that working together, we might, it might make it more of a desirable property. But yeah, I think you've hit all the features of the property, but I do think, though, what made Goss particularly desirable was, there's 60 acres there, which, and part of it is, I mean, is already a very large building there, which clearly wouldn't be desirable to us, but there's 60 other acres, plenty of room for parking, plenty of room for fields, it's all very flat, it's very desirable from a development standpoint. But again, I think the connection, the potential, it's, we're all in the theoretical, but the UNH interest in it, and the possibility that there might be some way to partner on something like that, it seemed like a worthwhile thing to take a look at.
Did you guys take cost into consideration when you looked at, did you, I mean, UNH has actively looked to purchase Goss, and it's also, since I sit on Durham Economic Development, it's also an incredibly desirable development program. What's gone out in Goss actually is like advanced manufacturing, as the printing has gone away. So it's like, from Durham's perspective, it's less, very undesirable, I would say, to have the middle school move out to Goss. But I think like the cost, if you haven't really looked at the cost of the property, I think you're going to be surprised by what the cost is.
Well, from, again, we did not enter into any negotiations or any direct conversations. In fact, we actively steered away from that, because we weren't, we didn't want to create-
I guess that's the next step, right?
So it would be. That being said, the, UNH has had significant conversations with the owner. The initial price that was quoted, UNH just kind of walked away and said, that's ridiculous, and they backed off. But it's been two or three years since that time, and the dynamics for the owner wanting to unload the property may have changed. I think there's some questions as to whether the price may have dropped, simply by virtue of the fact that the owner may be ready to unload it and get out of Durham, because they haven't had any luck finding a buyer at the price that they were originally talking.
And one issue also would be timing, and this is something I don't know the answer to, is assuming that they put a price and it's over a million dollars, is there threshold where you'd have to go to the voters to buy the land before, you know, to buy the land first?
Yeah, anytime that we get into the position of buying land, we need permission from the voters?
So I mean, in terms of how long it would take, you're talking, you'd have to, A, negotiate a price, and then you'd have to go to the voters to approve that, and then, so, you know, in terms of timing, that's a wild card there, you know. Couple of things, and then, so it might push back the, when it could happen, where I think, you know, an obvious advantage of using our own property is it's our own property, and we, you know, it has access to all the, you know, infrastructure things that we would need, so you don't need permission, you know, you don't need permission to build on your own property. Or maybe you do, I don't intend that.
Yeah, so the opposite of your question, Denise, is, you know, why relocate, why build a school in its current location? And we talked a lot about that as well, and a piece of that is very practical. For example, the transportation system. If we built in a location like Goss, or a location that wasn't central to town, we'd switch from, you know, and I can't remember the percentage, and maybe Michael can remember, but I think it was like, one-third of our kids are not on the transportation system. If we go to a remote location, you know, 100% of our kids would have to be transported to school. We'd lose the bikers, the walkers, you know, and we have a neighborhood that surrounds the high school and middle school, that's pretty dense, and we have a lot of walkers as a result. So that was an issue. Another big issue for its current location is the relationship, academic relationship between the middle school and the high school. So as an example, we have children who, at the middle school, who come up here to take their math classes. We have, we're, you know, we just went through a pretty significant development of the world language program, that we anticipate, over the course of the next three years, we'll have children who are pushing the envelope in world language, who would come up to the high school. We have teachers we share with the high school, music staff is an example. So there's, there's a lot of really good relationship. And then the other piece is, you know, the concept of urban sprawl. It's really unusual to have two schools as significant as the middle school and the high school in a town. Almost always, if you travel through the byways of New Hampshire, Maine, Vermont, you'll find these schools are in the outskirts of a town. And so there's some advantage to, you know, keeping the school in its current location, with many, many, many advantages. And, you know, the library's location was, part of its selling point was its location to the middle school and high school. So, you know, it, but, you know, the, I think that the point is that the majority of the people on the board, on the committee, who are associated with the school district or the town, directly felt that its current location was advantageous. There was a smaller group who didn't have connections directly to the school or the town, who felt like it may be advantageous to look at a location other than its current location. So, you know, that's why I was saying to Tom earlier, and to the board, there are still many unanswered questions, you know, when Al raises the issue of cost, we don't even know if Goss is a viable location. What we did learn in this process is there are not many viable locations. And some of them, as Tom pointed out, were, you know, really a tit-for-tat. If you're going to have 12 acres in town, or 12 acres out of town, then why would you bother to make the move? And I go back to something that Michael said, actually, that resonated with me at one of the committee meetings, is if you're thinking about the district, we shouldn't be thinking about just today, we should be thinking about the future. And, you know, that's what resonated with me related to the Goss property. The piece of property that we really fell in love with was actually owned by UNH, and it was right off the four corners of the Madbury Road and Route 4. They had no interest in selling it, but it would have been just a beautiful piece of property, good location, great growth location for us, and it was on the other side of the highway, but, you know, not so impossible that you couldn't set something up that would be safe for kids in that neighborhood to be able to navigate, but it just wasn't available. And then we looked at property, we looked at a piece of property in Madbury, at the end of the Madbury Road, where it reaches 155, and on the right, which used to be, you know, the location for the greenhouse that produced all the roses. I guess the history of that is, this was the largest rose production greenhouse in the country. And so it's been sitting there vacant. You know, that's, but that was 12 acres to 12 acres. Now, there was some conversation on the committee that the owner of the adjacent property might be willing to sell, so that, I think, was like third on the list. Michael, am I remembering that right? It was, it wasn't, you know, wasn't, the properties that we dismissed out of hand generally were pieces of property that didn't provide any additional advantages to the system, and we tried to hang on to the idea that a piece of property outside of Durham that could be viable would provide advantages for the future of the district. I guess that's how we really looked at it. And we didn't get to cost, and, you know, the same thing with borrowing our own property. If Goss is even interested in selling, we would need to find out whether it's a viable building site as well, because, you know, as you look at the top of a piece of property, it all looks well and good, until you get down below the surface and you find out whether it can sustain a building or not. So I mean, I, first of all, I think this is great, and I think that the two, I think you excluded most of, and I think personally, I'm ready to move forward with the two. I mean, as I pointed out, like, what I think are some of the negatives of Goss, there's are some significant positives of the Goss property. The West Edge, that area you're talking about, is really a long-term, large development for UNH, where they're looking to bring in factories, not factories, technology companies buying pieces, so that will be developed. And it also forms, with the Goss and the potential of working with UNH, it strengthens our relationship between the Oyster River District and UNH. So I think it is a good idea to investigate it. In terms of the properties, I agree with you, I'm looking at, even like, when you said Young Drive, I kind of groaned, because again, there's a lot of problems trying to do that. But I think, you know, from my perspective, I think you've narrowed it down to the two best choices. I think we should move forward just, whatever, if you want us to say, yes, we accept the report, but that our efforts really should go forward now on, like flushing out those two choices.
Are there questions we need to answer before we do that? One question, you know, and whether we have a good answer for it yet, is why not renovate the current middle school?
Yep, and that will be one of the questions that will have the construction manager and architect address once they're on board, because that's, and we won't get down to the little, you know, the picky things. We'll do it in terms of broad strokes, infrastructure, you know, the outer building, the expandability, what does a renovation resolve, what doesn't resolve? So we do have to have that for sure.
But in some ways, that's the easiest one to do, because it's kind of a known quantity. I mean, when you go-
The easiest one to do.
In terms of like renovating the building, I think it's going to, you know, it's an exercise that you can carry out, but I think in terms of fiscal viability, it's one that will quickly resolve itself. That's why I'm very simple. I mean, the actual doing it is not simple of like, how do you redo it? But the actual, in terms of, is it fiscally viable, is it not fiscally viable? I think that'll quickly rise to the surface.
There was no support for that, because just the footprint of the building is so big, the classroom, you know, part of it was built as a middle school, it has multi-levels, and, and I think the Blatt said, it's a tired, old building, and which doesn't have like a core that you'd want to like hold on to and expand.
Right.
And it just, it's almost horrendous to imagine what would happen to students during a renovation. I mean, a couple of years, where, where would they go, you know, it's like, so, so whether you- you do that in stages, but there's, there's no, there was no, and we had, we had like Blatt, you know, the report, and then we had two architects on the committee, and they just walked the building and they just, you know, said, this is, this is not.
There's a reason in the hands of those buildings sprawl, because no one could really attack the cost of centrally building a new school, so they're like, okay, let's take the path of least resistance and cobble on another piece to it, and that's like, and again, it's like, you look at other school districts and it's like.
So, the committee did spend a fair amount of time at the beginning of the year, looking at the current building and what could potentially be done with it, like, and we did have a few people on the committee who have some expertise in those areas, and I'm not, I'm not in construction, but I look at especially the physical plant from a technical perspective, and the way that building is built, you can't go up, you can't, you could add on to it around the corner, but you can't reconfigure the inside of it, the walls are not going to be moved easily, you can't change the size of the classrooms, which are too small, you can't, because of the way that the walls and the foundation is built, put in additional technology or plumbing or whatever, it's just a very difficult space to do much with in terms of flexibility of how you, how you would.
And then you add, and when it's difficult like that, that makes it costly.
Right.
And you'd have to bring everything up to code, you know, you begin to touch a building, and then everything has to be ADA compliant, you'd have to put in elevators, you know, it would.
And adding to all of that, the whole issue was one, the last renovation, or maybe it was the second to the last renovation, the whole issue with the library underneath his ledge, because originally, they had a different plan, so, you already, there's already a big issue, because they actually had to change plans, because they found that and it wasn't gonna, yeah.
So, I think, Tom, in terms of, you know, if the board is of a mind, they can just accept the report, and then, you know, the next stage in this is choosing the CM and the architect, and then attacking the questions that are unanswered in the report.
I don't know, I don't know if the board is ready to take that step at this meeting, you know, I mean, Brian, you, those are going to work.
You know, at first I was like, I don't, I would want more time, but honestly, I don't really think I need more time, you answered my question in terms of why Goss rose, you know, to the top as far as if we did build off-site, I feel like the report was really thorough, the committee spent a lot of time looking at all these options, and I think I would be comfortable with accepting the report.
I think it would be more difficult if we were looking to eliminate either the off-site or the build-on-site option tonight, but I think if we're just going to keep both of those in play, I'm very comfortable with what we, what we have.
I don't think there was anything in here that was surprising probably to any of us, so, I'm ready to move forward.
So, I think whether we have a motion to support the conclusions of this report, which does not decide between the onsite and offsite, but is, would be, I think, a significant step for, on our part, to say we are going, you know, we are supporting moving forward with building a new middle school, that's, yep.
So, I'll make the motion, I'll make a motion that we support the conclusions of, or the, the options of the, of the report, and empower you to go forward and further investigate the two options, actually, three options, the renovation, the Goss property, and building on the current site.
Okay.
Is that solid?
Yep.
Okay, second move by Al, seconded by Brian, ready, okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand, six in favor, well, we are moving forward.
Awesome, thank you, guys.
Yep, that's pretty significant, I think. Okay, we have the revised use agreement.
So, at the last meeting, I shared with the board that my concern related to the current practice in terms of the use of the facilities by organizations, and Tom had asked for the list of organizations that use the school, and, you know, sometimes these are just one-offs, and sometimes these are organizations that use it constantly, you know, the three organizations that come to my mind that use it consistently are Oyster River Youth Association, Growing Places, and Live and Learn, and what we discovered in this current school year is that the current use agreement left the district incredibly vulnerable to a complaint by a parent, a group of parents, that a organization using our facility was not following federal ADA guidelines, and, so, what I did was, I took the current agreement and revised it, and tried to make, make it clear that any organization using the school system is required to follow district policies and procedures related to ADA compliance, which is a significant shift in burden in terms of a complaint, the complaint would still be, if there was a complaint, would still be lodged against the school system, because we're the only ones that are required to be ADA compliant, however, in changing the language of the agreement, what I'm saying to the organizations is, if that happens, you're going to be responsible for legal costs incurred, or you won't be able to use the facilities, I know that sounds, it is a dramatic change from the friendly handshake gentleman's agreement that we operated under since probably the district was put together in 1954, but, we really learned how vulnerable we are in this current school year, and we incurred significant legal costs as a result of the complaint that was lodged against us in order to leverage us to have one of these groups comply with federal and state law, federal law in this case, so, I shared this last time, and, you know, I, you know, Michael asked me, well, this is, you know, really a management thing, why are you bringing it to our level, and I don't normally, unless I feel like there's going to be, you know, political ramifications, because this is a huge shift in practice, and I don't want to estimate, underestimate that, and, you know, organizations that have used us historically, and we still want them to use, I don't want the message to go out that we don't want these organizations to use our facilities, because they do provide an incredible service to our children, however, I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers of Oyster River that they assume the legal liability when one of these organizations chooses not to comply with ADA laws, regulations, so, that's the background on this, I took some suggestions from the last board meeting and incorporated it, I'm still, you know, obviously open to wherever the board is on this, and, but I really felt it was my responsibility to make you aware that this is an issue that the district has faced.
I would just like to, and I may be beating an issue that everybody else is okay with, but, now, the current practice, okay, I am, say, a group like Enbelay, okay, or, you know, and I want to just have an organizational meeting at the high school, do you require me to present you evidence that I have this million dollar insurance policy?
We require the.
But you require me to say that I have it, right?
They actually provide us, whoever we ask for it is generally somebody who's going to be, you know, using the facility for any length of time, the town carries a liability policy, the ballet company carries a liability policy, we now know the boys' scouts carry a liability policy, so, those types of organizations, but if you said, I want to come in and have a meeting to see whether there's interest in town for a cribbage club, no, we wouldn't require that, we'd just simply say, you can use our facility.
Okay, so the policy, the active policy is that, that you can use the school facility, and there's some discretion on the part of the administration whether you're going to ask for this, is that correct?
Yeah, and it usually boils down to how frequently are you going to use the facility?
Okay, but there's nothing in the, is there, is there anything in the policy that gives you that, I mean, I'm not, I'm saying, that makes total sense to me, okay, but is there anything in the policy that gives you that discretion, because it seems to me you have a use agreement that says categorically, no matter, you know, like if you're the PTO of beharment, that's not a school organization, that's a separate organization, right, but clearly you're not going to have, require the PTO to have a million dollar liability policy, are you?
We don't, because they comply with our, since they're part, they're an extension of us, so, Growing Places, Live and Learn, ORYA have their own bylaws and are separate from us, but the PTOs are a reflection of our own school system, so, we don't require them to have a liability policy, because generally, they're going to do everything that we want them to do related to the use of the facility, they're very good about it, so, no, you're absolutely right, the policy is, it's written, provides a certain level of discretion by Sue and I, and if there's ever a question, we sit down and talk about it, and we decide whether we feel it's necessary or not, you know, so, example, the ballet company, I think, uses us twice a year, they still have to provide liability.
There's a possibility of.
Of injury, somebody getting hurt, yeah.
So, I mean, maybe, maybe I haven't read the policies carefully as I should, but it seems to me that there should be, if there is discretion about groups that would not be required, whether that should be, am I missing something?
There is, in the use agreement, there are lots of questions about how many people are going to be involved in the nature of the activity, and the number of people involved in nature of activity does have an impact on the level of liability concern it is, so for example, like when Marina's Miles is here, clearly they're going to have five or 600 runners and five or 600 spectators, and so there's, it's a single day event, but it's a major event that has the potential for significant liability, and so they are asked to provide that, and those kind of organizations, I think Brian talked about this, his insurance background, it's fairly easy to get us a one-day coverage plan for those kind of things, the other activities, like if you're a group from the library and you're going to have, you know, 12 people in a classroom for a knitting activity, it's not an impact activity, so it doesn't necessarily trigger the level of concern, so that's where I think that the facilities department kind of screens those activities and determines what's needed for the individual nature of the activity.
Okay, Denise?
I'm just, I'm just thinking that perhaps the policy committee needs to take another look at the actual policy, because I am a little bit nervous, and I mean, it makes total sense, but I also feel that then it could be a charge of, well, you allowed this group and you said no to us, and you insisted we had this, but you didn't make this group have this, and, so, I'm thinking that we need to kind of maybe revisit, I'm looking at it now, and it really isn't clear to me anywhere in here that there's any sort of guidelines for that, so I think maybe the policy committee should take another look at it and see if we can, and maybe there isn't, I'm just skimming it quickly, and, but, that's my impression, is just to look at it again and to see if maybe we can kind of put some general parameters around when it might not be necessary to have, you know, all of these different.
You're only looking at the use agreement, though, there is, there are other policy components.
Denise is looking at the policy.
The policy right now, yes.
Because I know there's another document, and I wish Jim, Jim Riziki were here, that we spelled out specific organizations that are particularly those that we either don't charge for use or have some kind of special relationship.
Yeah, I saw that, like.
And it's a different.
But that's, even that's not totally clear, that's not totally, I saw that part of it.
So, I mean, if I take.
Well, you said, you have groups, you talk about groups in the policy, yeah, but it doesn't, it gives priority, kind of priority to groups and fees, but it doesn't give, it doesn't claim, you know, then you're exempt from certain requirements of the use agreement.
Correct, you're right.
Oh, yeah, I see, it's the fees for use of school.
And I'm, I'm thinking what you're saying makes perfect sense, whether we have the, if that's the way you want to go, I think the policy should say that, does that make sense?
It does.
And I have no problem with, you know, what Jim said about ADA, you know, that part of it makes sense to me, I mean, so this is like more of the insurance liability kind of thing.
So, if, go ahead, Michael.
Well, this section of the procedure is specifically about fees, and who's going to pay to use the facilities, the revised use agreement with the indemnification clause and reiterating insurance, that's a separate level of burden that we don't talk about in the procedure right now, so I agree with Denise, that policy and the procedure need to scrub to go along with this.
I just want to note one thing, that if anything is not met for the requirements, there's a separate form that we get that they ask for a waiver, so that is covered, and so if someone doesn't meet something, it never gets approved without coming to me, and I discuss it with Dr. Morris, and we've never, I don't think ever, waived the requirement for insurance for an event.
Right.
But we might waive the fee, because it's a, you know, there is a special form that we see when anything isn't followed for any reason, so there's no exceptions unless we see it.
So, I mean, do you believe that every organization on that list has insurance?
You know, what happens most of the time is they're covered by a larger group, so if you're with PTO, the PTO, large, if they belong to that, they have something that covers them, so, most of the time, they have something, yeah, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure they do, but when you talk about meetings, probably not, because we consider that a community event, and we figure that that's something we're willing to cover, we're willing to allow someone to use our building, and we're willing to let them use our building without a certificate of insurance, so like you said, if someone wants to come in and have a quick meeting, those are different situations, it's not an event where someone's likely to get hurt.
So, if somebody falls out of their chair at the meeting and breaks their neck?
Our liability.
Our liability.
But, that doesn't mean our liability's going to do anything, I mean, if someone particularly just falls, I mean, you can't ever protect yourself from a fall, I mean, some people fall, that's just what happens, it's just a matter of if that chair was in disrepair, then we might be liable, so that's how that works, it's not an automatic, we have insurance, we're going to cover it, they will send it to our insurance company, they'll review it and determine if it was something that we were at fault in our building.
If we, if we send this to policy, which I think is fine, can we do it in August so that we have this in front of the board for approval by the second meeting in August, because I would like to be able to start the school year with the revised use agreement for, so everybody knows from the get-go what the requirement is going to be?
Yeah.
Is that okay, Denise, do we have a special meeting?
Have a special meeting, because we don't currently have one, okay, got it, yeah, that would, I think that would be reasonable, but I'm just concerned if we make changes.
Then we bring it to the first meeting, so if we can have the special meeting before the first meeting of the board, they can see the changes, and then we can bring it in the second meeting of the board for approval.
Okay.
First read, doesn't mean they've accepted it, so we still have a chance to do whatever the board wants us to do in terms of modification, and then get it approved in the second meeting of August, and then I have something that I can then give to these organizations that's been approved by the board.
Do you have one other issue, too, is, you have in here a million dollars for property coverage, which is great, we have, require property coverage, but that's a lot more expensive than liability, so a lot of these organizations may not have it, if there's property and there's liability, two separate parts of the policy, liability is if you get sued, property is, they damage property by any means, that could be setting the building on fire, that could be breaking a window, could be breaking a chair, like we talked about, so, the only thing I would ask is, do you have our, our legal people look it over, because there is.
This has been reviewed.
This is contract law in here, you have to really.
This has all been reviewed by our attorneys.
So, but the property coverage being a million, it's a little on the high side, I think, but, you know, some people are not going to have property coverage, because if they don't own any physical property, there's no property to cover, but a, but a small business owner's policy would have a standard amount in there, it could be 100,000, it could be 500,000, so I don't, I think that's something we have, that may be a part of the waiver that you may have to look at, but keep in mind, if you waive it, and they do damage your property, there's no coverage.
Exactly.
So.
All right, thank you, I actually have a couple of things.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Two things. First, it's like, what struck me actually is when I looked at this list of the number of people that you have coming in here, and it's like, and there's many small nonprofits, what also hit me when I read your general assurances thing, I'm quite sure that many of them have absolutely no idea what the rules are, that we are held to a standard, so therefore, what needs to be written is kind of a shortened version of things you should know while you're on school property, and it doesn't matter if you come here 50 times, or if you come here once, people should read that and understand what the rules are on our property, and it's like, they should sign off on that, and my hope actually is, is like, some of these may not just go to Oyster River School System, they may go to another school system as well, so it's like, it raises their awareness, and it raises what best practice really is for nonprofits, so that should be something we add on to this, and I think it's really important initially, it may get easier as time goes by, but some of these organizations will learn now what the standards really are, because I think it's unfair to say, like, you're held, we're going to, you know, legally hold you to a standard that you may be sued for, and not have them understand what the standards are, that doesn't make any sense, so that needs to be done, the second thing is, in the policy, I brought it up before, I think, and I think Dan actually.
The second thing is, in the policy, I brought it up before, I think, and I think Dan actually mentioned it. First of all, you have to have a thing about if an incident occurs on our property, that, about reporting, how it's reported, and then there also needs to be a mechanism in there about us in terms of a independent third-party investigation. And the reason I say that is like buried in the policy, it talks, what happens if something goes wrong, and we say, you know what, we don't want you to continue using our, this is so egregious, we don't want you to continue using our property, or we don't want you to come back and use our property. So we need to have a mechanism in place where we, it's reported, we investigate it, and we come to a conclusion. That's not in the policy right now.
Okay, say more about third party, because I mean, are you saying that?
Independent, by what I mean is our standard where, that we allow, like, say, for example, I don't know, there's a horrible fight that occurs on the property. And what I don't want to have happen is that the organization that has rented our property carries out the investigation, says, this is what we found. I think it's our obligation, because we own the property, to investigate it and come to a conclusion, because ultimately, we're going to decide if that organization continues to use our property or doesn't continue to use our --
But wouldn't we have that right anyways?
I just want to spell it out. It's not spelled out clearly in the policy. It should be clearly spelled out in the policy. You know, so, but I mean, it should be like, when somebody reads through that, it should be clearly spelled out in another bullet point that that's in it, because it's a really important thing to have in there.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
There's work to do.
So we need to choose a date before we leave tonight.
Okay.
Kenny's not here, so.
Oh, that's right, Kenny's not here, so we may send it out an email, then maybe.
Yeah, no, fine, we can do it. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, I'm going to find my agenda. So we have a draft of the school board goals, which we could approve tonight, or we could wait till the next week. I mean, I don't know if we have to do it tonight, but people have additions, changes. I think now's the time to talk about that. And clearly, the two big goals, you know, are the strategic plan and moving forward in the middle school. And then, and I think just monitoring a number of other issues that are kind of ongoing, So I don't know, this is an awkward thing to bring up, but it has to do with the kind of discussion of race that we've had, you know, over the course of this year. But to my knowledge, there are no teachers of color in our school. Something, is that?
Yeah.
Well, and I think recruiting teachers of color is difficult, but I think we really ought to try to talk to people and find out ways in which we could, you know, meet up, you know, like contact schools that might be training teachers of color, such as Salem State, such as UMass Lowell, talk to people who recruit that. And I know it's hard, but to see whether you could bring some teachers of color into the pool, so we could interview them. Because I just think that we should try hard to do that. Because we could talk about institutional, you know, you could say, well, they don't apply to here, you know, but I know at the University of New Hampshire, if you said that, they'd say, well, what's your strategy for getting them to apply here?
Exactly.
You know, where do you go out and reach out to? You know, who do you know who might be a teacher, a teacher trainer of color who might be able to help you locate people and invite them, you know, to really, and that's something I think we should try to do, at least try to get a plan to do it the best we can, and, you know, because, because I think if we just put out, you know, because, I mean, we're such an attractive district, we could put out an announcement, and you have all these teachers in school districts that pay far less than we do, really outstanding young teachers who will apply. I mean, we can always, you know, kind of continue to do what we're doing and get good teachers, and so.
But we're in an area that's not very diverse, so when you reach out in an area that's not very diverse, you're not going to get a lot of diversity. It's just, so, I think, and I think you put that, like, expanding our reach is a good idea. I mean, it's like, it's thinking outside of the box a little, where we put a little extra effort to go somewhere. I think it's a good idea.
So we think this is an attractive district to teach in. We get lots of applicants when we have vacancies, but that is a piece that does seem to be missing. And I don't know if it fits more as a goal here, or as something that, maybe we need to start figuring out what that strategy is, and then it informs perhaps some small piece of the budget process for the following school year, if there needs to be some resources to do something like that.
We've talked about that, and I think you've talked to somebody at Berwick, you know, so I think you've already had a start on that, and I think that's mainly a matter of how we advertise, who we reach out to, but I think it'd be good to.
Today, I was with Chief Currie in Durham, and he recruited very young gentlemen of color, and I just said, how did that happen? And because, you know, he has the same issues we have, you know, this is a predominantly white community, and to try to make it attractive to a person of color, they want to be in a community that's diverse. And so he actually was able to recruit this gentleman straight out of.
UNH?
UNH. And so, and I met him by happenstance yesterday, because he was watching the gas line go in and introduce myself and so forth. So, you know, it can be done, it's not going, it's not, you know, I think, as it's articulated, it's going to be, we need to have a clear strategy on how we'll do it, and then hopefully we can draw in teachers of color, support staff of color. We just brought in a coach of color this spring. But I think it's an important issue. I think it is an important issue for our children, and I think it's an important issue for the community, so.
Good, thank you.
So I'm just wondering what, if we were going to include it as a board goal, what, how, do you have a suggestion as far as, you know, begin to explore, or how that would work?
Well, I like what Tom and Michael just said in terms of figuring out the strategy. So the board goal could be figuring out a strategy, and then, you know, I can reach out, and Todd can reach out to Berwick, and we can reach and ask, I mean, he started to give us some, how he does it, and it involves his connections in New York City and his connections with various colleges and so forth. And so it might be that he can connect us with recruiters. That could be, that could be an effective way. So I think if the goal is to build a strategy to recruit diverse teaching population, then we can put that strategy together and get it in front of you, and then when we do any advertisements, we reach out. And I think Michael's suggestion was to put some, you know, some money behind it, because, you know, if the recruitment involves traveling, then we need to do that, you know. If they're having a big teacher recruitment piece in, you know, say, in New York City, then somebody has to be there and representing us. So there could be some cost associated with it. Also, you know, advertising in places we haven't advertised before. I mean, we tend to advertise in a location that theoretically has national footprint, but we may have to be much more precise in how we recruit the district. So show the district up in terms of advertising for positions. So, yeah, I think we can, we can put a plan together. I'd be pleased to put a plan together, actually. And then we actualize it and see whether we're successful or not.
So maybe add it.
Yeah, treat it as its own, as its own goal, develop strategies for recruitment of staff of color.
Yep.
So we wouldn't limit it to teachers. It could be administrators, it could be support staff, I mean, you know, coaches.
Any openings.
Yeah.
Good.
So I don't want to, it's like, as we do these goals, it seems like I want less and less goals over time. But I think there's some really big ones, the strategic plan in the middle school on there. But I think the one thing that kind of strikes me that I'd like to hear at the end of the year is, like, we're about to embark on this massive one-on-one technology thing, and so at the end of the year, I guess I'd really like to hear, like, how did it go? What did we learn from it?
I think that's in there.
Is that in there?
Under the updates, yeah, it's Board Goal Three.
I couldn't find them, I think, but that's the big, I couldn't find them.
Yeah, I'll report.
That one really is, because that's a long-term one, where we're looking like, and I know, sitting on the technology committee, hearing how the high school is working there, it's a multi-year thing that we're in the process of, and it'd be kind of cool to, you always want to, like, when you do a big project like that, what would I have done differently is what I always think, and I think we'll probably have some great thoughts on that at the end of the year.
And we thought, you know, I think, I think it's also in there just to be more engaged, maybe as a board with technology and education, because, you know, I think in the past, we approve all these things, some of which I have a marginal understanding of when I approve, and, but how it's connected to education, and like, what does it enable students to do, and how could we kind of like, and what's the progression of students', you know, technological ability as they move through technological competence, as they move through the system, and how does what we provide enable that to happen? Because it seems to, you know, like, those two haven't really connected, at least in my mind, as we've.
We've been hardware and personnel, not.
Yeah, and stuff that I don't even know that we approved, you know, so. So I think that's in there. Are there other changes? I mean, this does, this is, this doesn't preclude us from looking at other things, but it kind of gives us a roadmap. Michael, did you have any others, or?
Well, you have a couple of my other thoughts as the, as the additional memo here that I had sent to Jim. Those are probably really more inputs to the budget process, to kind of get ahead of the, of the next fiscal year budget process.
Okay.
So the only request I would make of the board, and that is that, if, you know, we're not ready to adopt this tonight, that's fine. But again, in terms of being able to inform the staff of our direction, it'd be important that the goals be adopted either at the first or second meeting in August, so that the staff knows what we're, what you have set as goals.
So I'm wondering if, I mean, if all we're doing is adding the goal, which you've almost verbalized, whether we're ready to, I mean, Kenny's not here.
Yeah, we should wait.
Should we wait for Kenny?
Now I can add the goal on the strategy for recruiting staff of color.
Yeah, I mean, I'm curious whether we should wait.
It's the 15th. I mean, you can tell we're almost there.
Yeah.
Is that like, you know, and then officially be approved the 15th?
I mean, I think we've already, I mean, the whole middle school goal, I mean, we've already voted to go ahead with, to approve the reports. I mean, that's not going to vanish from the face of the earth.
Nor would the strategic plan.
And the strategic plan, you know, and I think the other things are kind of reports of ongoing activity.
Yeah.
So I mean, I don't, I think you could probably share that, and I just think Kenny often has things, you know, he's interested in, but I think that, at least the sense of the committee, is that this is pretty, a pretty final document, so if there's something, I mean, between now and the 15th, you know.
No, I just wanted to make sure I had it, you know, before opening of school, so.
Oh, it'll be sure, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so the 15th is fine. I think it's, the work and the feedback, I think we've evolved it to a place where it's almost, almost there. We'll just add that one new goal, and Todd and I will take that on and.
Is that okay?
Try to build it.
Okay.
So I think we need to make a visit with Michael again.
I will just, I'm not going to be here on the 15th, but I support what we have here, and I support the addition of recruitment goal.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Michael.
So we have to approve this, we don't have to, I mean, we, there's a motion, we need a motion to approve the sustainability nominations?
Yes, please.
Okay, getting on that. Okay, I think we have like three nominations.
I would nominate Maggie Morrison, Jacqueline Brun, and Christina Felix as sustainability nominations. Maggie is green team leader, Jackie is green team leader, and Christina is garden coordinator. And this stipends, Maggie would be $10,000, Jacqueline would be $10,000, and Christina would be $800, and that is in the budget.
Moved by Al, second by Brian. Discussion on this? Hearing that, all in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, those nominations are approved. We have several policies. Are these for, let's see, these are all for first read, is that right?
They're all for second.
No.
Just KCDA.
No, KCDA is for first read, and then the others for second read, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve policy KCDA for first read.
Moved by Denise, is there a second? By Brian? Questions on this?
We adjusted this last year. What is, is the update for any particular reason? It seems like it's been broadened now. Is that for a little bit of leeway, maybe?
Do you want to take it?
The component that we worked with was the, the process for how we vet requests for memorials within the school, and we worked to try to spell that process out a little better and articulated how that worked. The policy before was a little more vague in terms of, there was a committee made up of our mental health professionals, but this kind of tried to articulate it more so it was a clearer process for people to make that request. So that's, that's the only thing that's changed.
So this one's been moved and seconded, right?
Yeah.
Further questions? Hearing that, all in favor, please raise your hands. That policy's approved for first read. Okay.
Okay.
So Denise, do you want to?
Yep, so I'll make a motion to approve for second read policy BBBE, unexpired term, BBBF, student representatives to the school board, and BCA, school board member ethics.
As a block, okay.
Yes.
Those three are, the motion is to approve those three as a block. Is there a second? Al, second by Al? Discussion on those? None? All of us in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, those are approved. School board committee updates in here, I think there is mention of the manifest.
Right, so the manifest committee met this evening and reviewed the manifest.
Everything was in order.
You guys are awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Other committee, you know, obviously, the drafting committee of the, got the report ready for the facilities, the middle school. Others? No? Okay, public comment?
Say something, to say I was here. My kids are having a great time this summer. My boy is doing a reach. He's at Dex Robotics this week, actually likes it, not complaining. And my daughter is doing phys ed over Velax, an idea I heard, first heard at a school board meeting, and it's freeing up an extra course for her next year, and it's surprisingly incredibly rigorous. I think even, probably more rigorous than, certainly than it sounds, and maybe even more than taking phys ed at school.
Okay, good, thanks, Dean. Okay, closing actions. So we have these meetings coming up, and we'll have to schedule a, another policy committee meeting to look, Denise?
So I'm wondering if it would be possible to schedule that policy committee meeting on August 1st to piggyback with the, maybe with the, maybe slightly, because I know policy usually meets at 3:30, perhaps manifest could be moved up to 3:00 or something like that. I don't know if that's a possibility.
It is, it is not for me, Denise.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
And I'm not sure about me, and so we have to, we have Kenny, so I think we're going to have to do that.
Do that by email, okay.
Have Wendy.
Yeah, why don't we do Wendy doing the?
Just to circulate something.
Thank you.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. We have no non-public, so I think we're ready to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Al, second by Michael. All of us in favor? Six in favor, we're adjourned. Here, here.